We're done with real estate courses. We'll call this meeting to order for the Planning Commission of City of Madeira Beach, Monday, November 6, 2023. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wykoff?
Present.
Commissioner Gavahy? Commissioner Dillon?
Here.
Commissioner Novo?
Here.
Commissioner Connolly?
Here.
Commissioner Marr?
Here.
Commissioner LeRue?
Here.
Looks like we've got a full house. Thank you, everyone, for being here. At this point, we have public comment. Seeing nobody here, we'll just jump right on over that. I always forget it. I didn't forget it tonight, and there's nobody here. Ha! And you'd yell at me if I forgot it, though. But there's no one here, so we're going to move on to the approval of the minutes. We'll take a motion to approve both sets of minutes, if you're so inclined. Or if you have any changes, please bring them up now. Anyone?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as they are written.
And would that motion include July 10 and September 11?
Both meani-minutes.
I know what you meant. All right, so we have a motion to approve the July 10, 2023, minutes and the September 11, 2023, minutes. Just need a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. LeRue?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Marr?
Yes.
Mr. Novo?
Yes.
Commissioner Gavahy?
Yes.
Chairman Wykoff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. Minutes are approved. Onto our new business section. Item A on the agenda, ordinance 2023-21, dune protection and beach debris. Who's up?
I will read the ordinance by title for you.
All right.
Ordinance 2023-21, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending Article Three, Beach Debris, Chapter Forty-Two, offenses and miscellaneous provisions of the Madeira Beach Code of ordinances to amend the purpose to include commercial property, include commercial property in the definitions, add commercial property and provisions relating to blocking pathways to obstructions on the beach provision, require property to be stored inside during a named storm event, include commercial property and leave no trace informational signs and rental units, add prohibition regarding crossing dunes and the removal of vegetation on dunes, providing for conflict severability and codification, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Does someone from the city have anything for us?
Yes. So this is pretty straightforward. We had the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office deputies, some approach staff, asking us to look at the St. Pete Land Development Regulations. That locally, we were having issues of being able to enforce disturbances on the dune systems, camping on the beach, and then commercial property on the beach. So this really inputs and adding in commercial property and not just personal property, and then inputting from St. Pete Beach's codes what's worked for them to enforce blocking and disturbing the dune systems, and then storing property during named storm events. So it's pretty straightforward. But talking to the sheriff's deputies' office, this will help them be able to enforce on the dune system and the beach.
Okay. Anyone have any... Where am I going here? Do we have any public input on this matter at this time? I see none. Commission members, anybody have any questions or comments?
I have a question. Most of the dunes are waterward coastal construction control lines, aren't they?
Yes.
So weren't they mostly regulated by the state?
The sheriff's office also regulates on our property. I think that there's one, the county beach, that they're not allowed to enforce, but everywhere else, they're allowed to enforce on the beach.
Is that the one at 145th-ish?
Yeah.
Okay.
But do we have any jurisdiction beyond a CCC line?
Yes, we do. And they're able to enforce beyond that.
Okay.
So does this mean our commercial chair rental people are not allowed to leave their things out overnight?
Yes.
What... Do we know what they're going to do with them? They have to physically remove them completely from the beach?
Or secure them.
Or just secure them? Okay, so they can drag them up, strap them down?
But then during a named storm event.
Then they have to remove them during a named storm event?
Yes.
So they just can't leave them out because we have people sleeping on them and...
Mm-hmm. And then we also included in the packet tonight, I was just showing the sea turtle disturbances where...
Right.
So we're seeing that with the commercial property, too. So...
So I'm surprised we haven't had this in place before. I mean, you know, because we have all the signs, "Stay off the dunes," you know? And that's what... I'm at the beach all the time and see the kids jumping.
I was surprised as well when they approached us, that our code wasn't strong enough to really enforce. So they spoke to St. Pete Beach. They said this is working in their community, so they said, "Can we just adopt these?"
How about some of the properties or condos that theoretically own the beach property? I mean, because that's what, as I was looking through the county records, and surprisingly enough, or I don't know which way it is, but like, they can... They... It's their property. And I remember on the schooner hotel of the three properties, the one property had that they owned the sand, and that's where they were going to be putting cabanas.
They owned it to the high watermark.
To the high watermark. Right. So, but what about in those situations?
I don't know exactly. I would assume yes, but I'm not positive, so I don't want to tell you yes or no.
I mean, you know, and I feel it's a very good thing, but I believe at some point a couple of years ago, well, I think when the people with the beach chairs, they went into an issue, "They've done it for 30 years, so why can't they continue doing it?" Well, that's what somebody replied. If you speed for 30 years and you don't get a ticket, but you get a ticket, it's still illegal. It's wrong. So I mean, you know, so I'm very forward for this and agree with it, but are there still the loopholes of if the people... If the condos own the property?
Well, Ms. Meyer may be able to answer this. If you look at the definition that's established in the code, the first one, it says, "Public beach" means all beaches within the city. No qualifiers. So if that definition is taken as gospel, I don't think it precludes anyone, because, you know, even though you own up to the high-water line, you're not allowed to fence it off or keep people from traversing that space, right?
That's the way I interpret the wording here.
Yeah, so the definition, if that's codified, it would mean all beaches within the city, and there's no but.
Thank you. I mean, and I'm just trying to make sure that we're...
Not aware, didn't stay at a Holiday Inn Express either, so I don't know.
Yeah, then a lot of other beaches you visit, their dunes are well-defined with little picket fence. And I noticed ours aren't, and we've talked about this before. We have the... You don't need a sand dune if you have the retention wall. And when they were building the Barefoot, this commission recommended that we make that... They have to put in the sand dunes as part of the construction, but we recommended that, and I guess the commissioners didn't vote yes on that part of the plan. But yeah, you know, you see wedding parties up there taking photos, dogs running around, the beach... The rental guys have their stuff halfway up the sand dunes. Even, hate to say it, sometimes the city garbage cans are on the sand dunes. So yeah, I think this is a good thing, and it needs to be done.
All right. Any more questions, comments?
You... Joe, you know, you just made me think a little bit about it. Our garbage cans, would that... Our garbage cans within that area, are we subject to removing them every night as well?
Yes, we would be subject to this as well.
Well, they don't have to be removed, they just have to be secured.
Removed during a storm.
And removed during a storm. So secure... Most of the garbage cans are next to a post, and they're chained to it or, you know, locked to a post. Because I don't know who steals garbage cans, but apparently that's a thing. I don't know.
Could be.
So the ones I've seen, when I've gone over there, they are secured, too. There's a four-by-four post with an eye bolt on it.
As secure as the post.
Right, well, yeah. How bad do you want it? Keeps the honest people honest. Okay. Any more commentary, anything we see needs to be tweaked? I mean, I'm sure if it needs to, we'll find that out later. Right? Good? All right. Well, we can have a motion if anyone's so inclined to do so.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-21, dune protection and beach debris.
Thank you, Commissioner Dillon. Anyone have a second for us?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Novo. Any discussion about the motion? I don't see any, so we'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Commissioner Novo?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Marr?
Yes.
Commissioner LeRue?
Yes.
Commissioner Gavahy?
Yes.
Chairman Wykoff?
Yes. All right, our motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Onto item B under new business, ordinance 2023-33, amendment to capital improvement element of the comprehensive plan. Ms. Meyer?
Thank you. Ordinance 2023-33, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the capital improvements element of the comprehensive plan of the City of Madeira Beach to update the capital improvement program, CIP, schedule of the capital improvements for fiscal years 2024 through 2030, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much. Our city, please.
So each fiscal year, the city is required by Florida statutes and by its own comprehensive plan to amend its five-year capital improvements program, CIP, and update the capital improvements element of the comprehensive plan. The planning commission, representing as a local planning agency, is required to review and make recommendations regarding the CIP, and then have a public hearing to update the capital improvements element of the conference of plan. The portions of the CIP that are to be reviewed are those facilities improvements of $100,000 or more that affect levels of service, standards, and adopted into the conference of plan. Fort Pinellas reviewed ordinance 2023-33 and said it was not impacted by the county-wide rules. The fiscal impact of the capital improvements program is $21,262,500 for FY '24, $13,725,500 for FY '2025, $8,146,500 for FY '2026, $8,189,500 for FY '2027, and $737,000 for FY '2028, $1,165,000 for FY '2029, and $65 million for FY '2030. Staff recommends the approval of ordinance 2023-33. And just to clarify, so the Board of Commissioners adopted this when they did the budget next fiscal year, but we still have to physically put in our conference of plan through this ordinance. And attached to it is the ordinance itself, the email from Fort Pinellas confirming that they don't have any issues with the ordinance and the business impact statement. And the way the ordinance is set up, it crosses out the old table, and then the new table is in red and underlined. And it has the project title, and then like an item name that describes it more. And at the bottom of the table, it totals out for each year. It's long. Yeah, it's a lot of pages. Yep. And then let me just get there. Business impact. And then the business impact is just the fiscal impact on the city, which I stated earlier. I'm done presenting. If you want to go on to discussion.
Okay. Thank you for that. Looks like we got a big impact in 2024, a lot of capital improvement projects. You did say this has gone through the city commission already.
Yes, this has already been approved by the city commission through the budget. So it's basically taking that information and just inputting it in our comp plan.
Okay. So we're not here to tear this thing apart up and down and make all kinds of recommendations and changes because...
You can't really change it.
We're kind of sterile in this whole process at this point. We're just here to say, "Okay, stick it in the master plan," right?
Yeah, it's... We have to do it every year. It's a requirement, so...
I just wanted to be clear, because we could get thoroughly in the weeds with this, you know, if you let us.
Unfortunately, you can't.
I see it coming. Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments that they'd like to make, knowing that we can't do anything about it?
Well, I just got the one question. Is, so it looks like the first three years are all that's really important. You're putting just numbers in for the next couple of years?
Yeah, we have to look out every, you know, for the five years, and the next year will be the next five years, so... But yeah.
Sure, and the next year, 2025, becomes probably different than what proposed this year, and so on and so on. I mean, you saw one year is only $737,000. That's unlikely to remain that number, I would think, after a couple of years, right? Because we'll find places to put more money. Okay. All right. Here we are. You know what time it is.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-33, amendment to the capital improvement element of comprehensive plan.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Dillon. I need a second, please.
Second.
All right. Thanks, sir. We have a motion and a second. Any questions about the motion itself? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Gavahy?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Marr?
Yes.
Mr. Novo?
Yes.
Commissioner LeRue?
Yes.
Chairman Wykoff?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Onto our next item of new business, letter C, the 2024 Planning Commission Schedule. And you've seen that in your packet. That was so kindly provided by our city staff members. So there you have it. Everybody okay with what's been proposed? And as I'm sure you're aware, we have had to make changes as we travel through the year or meetings get canceled for lack of interest, or lack of anything to do, I should say. Not that we're all not keenly interested in everything.
Yeah, in the past, excuse me, I think in the past, the ones that always fall on the first, like, the first, they always seem to be a little bit of a hard to... I don't know, they always seem to be changed, but this is fine, the way it is. Like you said, we can change them if we had to.
We also took into account all the holidays, even with the deadlines, so all of the holidays and weekends.
Yeah, July 1st, that might be a tough one not to change. That one always gets changed.
Yeah.
And I'm sure April 1st is just an April Fool's joke.
The joke.
We'll all show up with our red noses on that day, right? Okay. Well, I mean, knowing that it is always subject to change, at least we have a schedule in front of us, and it is something that the citizens can be aware of with regard to the application deadlines and things like that. So as those change, we would have to change those well, far enough in advance to allow for those deadlines to be modified for our residents to take necessary action. So we'll take a motion to approve the schedule, if you'd like to do so. Anyone?
I mean, I gotta say, I'm already going to be out on that first one, January 8th. I don't know if...
Okay.
Since it's the first one, maybe... I mean, I don't need to be here for quorum necessarily, but obviously, I'd like to, so...
Boy, that's a long New Year's Eve party.
Or a long hangover.
Damn.
Okay, well, that's definitely something to consider. Is anyone else thinking they might have an issue on that particular date?
So let's check our calendars. Well, the only thing, though, is if we move ours, then it kind of implicates and moves on to the BOC, because they usually typically follow right behind us. And if we have any issues to move on to them, that makes it difficult for them, I believe, also.
Yeah, I'm just looking at our calendar. So I think BOC is... It's usually the second Wednesday and the fourth, so it'd be the same week how it is right now. So then if we did the 15th, which I think a few of our staff might be out on the 15th as well. Oh, because we have... I think City Hall is closed that day, on the 15th.
I guess what they're saying is...
I may just need to have an absentee.
Sorry, we'll miss you.
I mean, that's fine.
We're really going to miss you.
Yeah. If there are going to be, you know, two or more of us with that, then that's a problem.
Sure.
So...
Sure.
I'm going to bring it up.
Well, having seen that, I guess we'll leave it there, and we'll talk about you when you're not here.
I'll be watching on TV.
Right, there you go. Or if you have to, you can call in from the sky, you know?
Yeah, I've done that before.
I know.
We couldn't do Zoom?
Yeah, we had them on the phone one time. We needed them for a quorum.
I was sick, yeah, that was a long one, too.
Yeah. All right. Well, we'll take a motion to approve, subject to necessary amendments as we travel through the year.
I make a motion to approve the schedule as tentatively set up in our packet.
I'll second.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners Dillon and Noble. All right, let's go ahead and call the roll for the approval of the schedule.
Commissioner Dillon?
Yes.
Commissioner Novo?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Marr?
Yes.
Commissioner LeRue?
Yes.
Commissioner Gavahy?
Yes.
Chairman Wykoff?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Schedule approved. No old business that I'm aware of, and we'll move on to administrative or staff presentations. We have one that it looks like here, enclosed and open accessory structures.
Yes, so we talked about this before, and staff has put together a draft, it's an idea of where we might take this. We brought this to the BOC workshop, his last workshop. And I think that probably the best way to go about this, this is for the shade structures, where we have people that have tiki... Tikis in their backyards or gazebos that really aren't your traditional accessory structure, like a shed, and wanting something larger and in the rear setback on the water. So I think it'd probably be best and easiest if we just go through page by page, getting your input, see what y'all think, where we came up with our ideas. So I guess just starting on 56 of your packet, in R1, those setbacks come from... The side setbacks come from the lowest setback in that district, that seven-foot. And then we pulled the 12 feet on the rear setback from the pool section, to be similar to the pool section in our code. And then you could also go as close to eight feet to the water's edge with the sign-and-seal certificate from an engineer, saying that the structure will not affect the integrity of the seawall or dead men. So we got that from our pool section. R2 looks very similar with a five-foot side setback, and then the same 12-foot, and then up to eight feet, if you have that letter from the engineer. R3, we didn't see anything... We thought that it worked in R3. R3 is along the beach side. The most... Mostly condos, some hotels. I think that area worked. You can stop me if you have... If you want to have some input or questions. And then C...
Could we... Is there any way of pulling up a screen of where the Rs are? I mean, our current, like, R1, R2 areas, yeah?
Yeah, sure. Andrew, can you go to the zoning map? R1s are like the Finger Islands, and then you'll see. So R1 is that yellow color. Can you make that a little larger? So everything there is R1. So currently in the code, the side yard setback, say if you're building a new building, it is seven-foot. It's 15 total, seven's the minimum, so we just took the seven-foot side back... Setback on the side. And then similar in the R2, that orange area, that's a five-foot setback from the side property line. And these are for lots on the water. If you're not on the water, then it's two and a half feet. Then that's how it's currently written.
So the rear setbacks is 12?
It's 12. You can go to eight feet if you get a sign-and-seal letter statement from an engineer, saying it will not affect the seawall, the integrity of the seawall or the dead man.
Sometimes, though, a property line could be within the water way.
So we... Yes. We generally measure that from the water side of the seawall. And let's see, it says, "From the water's edge of the seawall."
All right, so that should be more specific to the seawall and not the property line, if that works.
It's written like that in our code. Yeah, it's written.
All right. And then the other question is a dead man. So, you know, I guess structurally, it needs to be designed so it won't affect the dead man, or if it does, they need to be adjusted.
Yes. And that's how it's written for the pool section in our code, and so that's been working. So we just... We figured it could work here as well.
So I have two other questions. One, the other one has to do with some sort of a visibility triangle. I don't know if we oppose that.
Yeah, we looked at that, because I know we discussed that. Commissioner Connolly, I believe you brought that up. We... Marcy and I reviewed that, but we felt like it would be difficult to... When we review permits, and also the language in the code, we tried to write it out and imagine it on a few... A few lots. Marcy, did you have an example of that?
Yeah, we did have it on the last one. I think it was booked it.
It was just a minute.
One second, I'll show you. We did play that out.
Sorry, we... Yeah, we did play that out. What meeting was that, the workshop, I think? Yeah, the last workshop. Oh, I think it's on the actual computer. Okay. We could always look at that again, but when we kind of played with it on different lots, it was a little tricky. It's also tricky for property owners to imagine, when you're reading the code or explaining it, where exactly they could put that. So we thought this was a little more straightforward, so that's why we wrote it how it is in your packet.
Okay, here we go. Let's try and... There we go. Okay. So when we... Oops, messed with that one. Step with uh something like this.
It was the other tab.
Yeah, yeah.
Packet.
So if you did the triangle in the same piece of property, and this is a an actual survey that we kind of played with, and this everything is two scale you're seeing, so the ten by ten, eight by twelve, nine by twelve. If you do a visibility triangle, it I feel like it opens us up to a lot more interpretation and kind of back and forth. Whereas this gives some more flexibility. It's reasonable if you have pools or a shed or pool deck. The triangles seem to kind of drive some other issues that we thought would just render just become a little impossible to overcome almost because you see you end up forcing your tiki right into this little area here. And if we do go larger, as Commissioner Connolly was suggesting as well, I do think we'll run into a lot of issues. So keeping it kind of similar to the primary structure seemed to render something a little more reasonable.
Well, I was mostly worried about the neighbor neighbors, yes, not not the visibility triangle from within because if they can't see the water, that's okay. I mean, they would, you know. But it's mostly from the neighborhood, from property line, corner, like a diagonal.
So you would want the visibility triangle from the opposite that way?
It's like the opposite?
Yes.
And then we end up with just an inverted triangle here.
And it could be like a twenty by twenty, or it could be, you know, something like that where the neighbors could be enjoying the view of the water without having to block their view with the structure.
So it's five feet. So how many feet over is it from the
Five feet right here.
So.
So this would be like an R two.
R two, so the so the shed is five five feet from from the side setback on this.
Well, in this diagram, yeah, in the in this diagram it would be, and we just kind of brought it up a little bit because the entirety of the structure would need to be within the the triangle or the rectangle, whatever whatever we create, the entirety of the structure would need to be within that.
I guess I don't I don't know how neighbors would get their view blocked if it's within like a side minimum side setback that we usually require at the R R two zoning district.
Because currently we have nothing. You can't put anything there. So by putting up a structure, you're basically eliminating part of the neighbor's potential view, which I believe the mayor said I'm one of the last ones that supposedly the last administration said, well, too bad, you've only got your view of what your property is.
And there's also landscaping, too, that's allowed to grow to natural height. So if you have like the foxtail palms and stuff like that, I mean, those.
Fish tail palms.
A fish tail, yeah.
You could have a fence along the property line right here, right? So I I that's what I'm just kind of.
Yeah, are are you entitled to the view behind your neighbor's property? I mean, that's the question.
That's a fundamental issue, right? Are you entitled to a hundred eighty-degree view or just down your property lines? Like, no one can impede it. They can't have things hanging over and blocking your view that start in their yard, right?
Fence your property and along the property lines and block their view technically.
Well, you can't have a, if you're on the water, you can't have a six-foot-high
Right.
solid fence.
I think the.
And I think that was the original intent of the code, is to keep that open openness and views. If you want us to do the triangle but flip it, could do that. The the thing that Marcy and I can foresee being an issue is interpretation and permitting will be more difficult, not saying that it can't be done, but it'll just be more difficult.
I think it'll force people wanting a lot more variances. I think I think that inverted triangle is really gonna, if you pick the center line and draw it back out, if you throw it, when once you throw the pole in there, you become limited to right up against your house, which which would be fine. I could just foresee people not being what they necessarily wanted, but if you feel like it kind of renders a better.
Well, the the visibility, nothing, nothing within that visibility triangle could be higher than, let's say, three feet, including fence or any structure within that twenty by twenty. And it just gives respect from one neighbor to the other. It just gives flexibility to be able to enjoy your water view from all aspects.
I think the old commission already determined that that would be null and void, that your view is from your yard back. If you have something, great, but didn't they determine that with the hedges?
The hedges, yeah.
What if we lined the shed up with with the side setback of the primary structure of the waterfront lots?
It is for the, it's on the smallest. So like, say, R one is seven foot and eight feet.
Yeah, that's what it would happen.
What about for like the existing structure on the property?
Then you're gonna look have a lot of legally non-conforming structures, and that could
Marcy.
have an issue as well.
Do we have any idea of how many lots that this would not work in?
That have existing tiki structures right now?
In other words, because I could show you three houses that their walls are, there's no property.
Yep.
All right, so my question is, how many of those lots? No matter what, I mean, they just don't have the room. How many, do you know?
No, but there's a there'll be a significant amount.
Is there thirty? Is there fifty? Is there?
More than thirty.
Yeah.
More than thirty?
We have a lot of legally non-conforming properties, meaning they were built before the code, the zoning code.
Unfortunately, the very small lots, very kind of larger homes have been built on the smaller lots. They tend to have wanted to max out the rear setback, the front setback, then you throw in a pole. By that time, you've pretty much eaten up everything, so it's gets a little difficult to come up with something that I think works for everybody, keeps visibility, allows for a reasonable size accessory structure. Becomes a little little difficult on the size of lots that we have.
And we traditionally have recommended approval to the commission on those non-conforming lots that they can build on the same footprint, or they would have to do the bowling alley couple lanes. So I think that that part of it's been addressed.
Well, if. Because you proposed this and you just wonder, how much pushback are you gonna get? Because they're gonna say, well, you didn't take me into consideration on my piece of property.
And that's why.
You took Mr. Smith across the, you know, and he's got a giant lot.
And that's that's fair, and that's the one of the struggles when we sat down to even look at the accessory structures and sizing and location. You know, we went through a lot of drawing iterations. And we just, we we knew it was opening up a lot of stuff. We were gonna provide for something that a lot of people just physically couldn't have, and they're gonna come in for variances because, you know, they're gonna want, they're gonna want to have the the tiki or the accessory structure, but it's gonna be very difficult to to construct some of these on the lots that we have.
This this is a problem that's been since forever, right?
Yeah.
I remember back in the days, it was probably twenty-plus years ago when we had a board of adjustment, and we were constantly seeing variance requests for this very same type of thing. And because of the way the codes are written, none of them were allowed, basically, so every one was a variance request. It seems like this is a little bit of a a benefit to most, and it's not gonna benefit a few. But those few were already not gonna be able to do this anyway without a variance. So this sort of opens it up a little more opportunity for people to customize their backyards, provide shade, get out of the sun, which all the good things that go along with that. And then we're still gonna have the small, you know, some of those hundred and forty-seventh, hundred and forty-eight lots that are like forty by forty. I mean, what are you gonna build on there, you know, like a one-person tiki hut and sit on a bar stool under a little, you know? And so it's gonna be really difficult. So those are still gonna require the variances. I don't see any way that we can lay a blanket over the entire city and say, this is gonna work for everybody. It just doesn't happen, but I think this is a step towards being a little more, first of all, taking less of the city's time to deal with constant variance requests for these types of things. And then it'll, the same people that were still adversely affected, if you will, by the code are going to be those same people, but it just opens up the doors for a few more people to be able to do some other things.
Yeah, when we were setting this up, we really tried to come up with something that we thought was straightforward, applicable to the properties, something that we could enforce and something we felt was reasonable and wouldn't constantly have us doing the variances or, you know, code enforcement or. So we kind of felt like having something clear and, you know, easy to follow was was kind of the best approach with this, understanding that a lot of lots are simply just limited by design.
And we have a lot of oddly shaped lots because of the waterfrontage and we and some of the way they were carved up before time began. You know, and you've got lots that are forty feet wide. It's hard to build anything on a forty-foot-wide lot. And there's some that are only thirty-five and thirty-seven and thirty-eight feet wide, and that really cuts down you, so you end up with a two-lane bowling alley. In so in some cases, a short two-lane bowling alley, so it's it's hard to make that happen. But I think this is a positive step towards allowing people to, you know, kind of upgrade their their personal space.
And if your backyard's only ten feet and you're on the water, then you don't, yeah.
So the way I'm trying to get a hold of this. So basically, you might as well just write it up for a ten by ten and put a provision in the code saying that if you, your property is bigger, that would accommodate a bigger, but then you'd have to have a a maximum size.
Yeah, so.
The maximum size, if you look at your packet on fifty-eight, that's where it really talks about the size. And what B O C suggested, which I think is a great idea, is instead of having ten feet by ten feet by, you know, having a square footage of, you know, maybe you want it to be a rectangle, not a square. If you want, so that gives property owners flexibility on what design.
So in other words, there's, you're writing it with flexibility for somebody.
Yeah.
And then the the rest have to, it's just gonna be whatever you can come up with.
Well, yeah, because if you have a property and it makes more sense that you have a, you know, eight-foot wide and a twelve-foot long or thirteen-foot long or something like that, then it gives you the flexibility to to orient something to kind of suit you to the best of your abilities, just saving a square footage limitation. And the expectation would be every part of the structure falls within the zone that we've given you. So we don't worry about overhangs and, you know, the runoff or anything like that. Every single part of your gazebo or structure would fall within to the parameters that we've given.
That was my feeling when I read this, to mandate a ten by ten. Because of our weird lots, it may not be, it's probably better to come up with a square footage number, especially, you know, if you're talking about bar-type structures. They don't have to be as deep. It'd be better if they're wider or, you know, longer one dimension than the other to accommodate seating and whatever, whatever. But so I don't know if that's, you know, something we should propose at this point, to change that from a ten by ten mandate to a a square footage.
We were already going to change that. We just had this in before that meeting, so.
All right. Well, sure.
You have any suggestions of the square footage? We could talk about that now. Suggestions of the square footage of of your tiki structure or gazebo shade structure?
Well.
Well, I think you've got it in here. I mean, you know, you've got the ten by ten or could go up to as much as ten by fourteen.
Hmm, no, it's fourteen feet high.
Yeah, mainly we stuck within around a hundred square feet, but if you guys wanted to bump up that, then.
Now's the, now's the time to talk about that.
Right, and that's where you were talking about your sizing.
Remember I said to you before, is if you had some kind of where you put the square footage of what you have in the backyard, and you would divide that and come up with what would be the presses for the whole thing, if you understand what I'm saying.
Like a sliding scale, depending on the square footage you have available.
Correct.
Drive the.
So if you have a hundred-foot backyard, you could make a twelve by twenty. But if your yard is only forty wide, then you would divide whatever number and you'd get your square footage of what you are permitted to to put in.
We could play with that. That would be kind of some easy numbers for us to.
Because then that takes all the guessing out of it. So if someone comes to you and say, well, this is what you can do, and that's it.
And that would be good, too, because I think it would be good to not be put in a situation where we are going for variances because somebody wants ten more square feet. We say, no, this is where you fall into the table. We're not supporting variances outside of this. And so that that would be helpful, too, because
Yep.
it's representative of their property size, and that's what's driving it.
Yeah, I just think you have to clearly define what you're basing the measurements on. Is it the backyard?
That's what I was thinking, exactly.
Or is it the overall lot size, or is it the?
The backyard.
Yeah.
That you're you're building in the backyard.
What's the backyard? If you have a screened porch, is that backyard, you know, is that?
I think you can do it based on the distance of the primary structure to the.
To the rear property line and then side to side.
Well, the seawall dimension, whatever we reference, right?
It's the water side of the seawall.
Water side of the seawall.
Sort of like we do, I mean, it's a little bit, it's gonna be different, but, you know, with signage in commercial zones, you're allowed a certain square footage of signage based on your linear front footage, right?
Right.
Yeah, we could play with something like that.
I think that makes perfect sense. And it it just alleviates all the arguments.
Yeah. So would this be a table, and then you'd also have a, like a
Yes.
but also no greater than X?
Correct, and then you have to have a max.
Yep.
Because I mean.
We'd have to max it out.
Even though your lot is two hundred feet, we still
Yeah.
we don't want a Taj back there.
So like on, like, let's say, a forty by hundred square foot lot, which is some of the R two zoning district, would we have like a minimum, like accessory structure size? Because that's gonna be a pretty tiny backyard.
I mean, you've seen some of them where it's just like a little round one that goes over, almost like a bar top table, and it's just about that big.
I say no minimum. I think we're just trying to limit. So, I mean, if you're doing something small, then it is what it is. I don't think, I don't know. That's the way I think about it.
Yeah, I've seen those tiki huts where it's just one post in the middle, like an umbrella with a table built underneath it. If that's what it is, it's what it is. I mean, no harm, no foul, right?
I don't want, I don't want to have, I don't want to tell you, yeah, you you should actually go bigger than what you, you know what I mean? I want you to build a big palaver.
Right.
It was a max.
Yeah, max, but.
Yeah, I think just establishing a maximum is probably the number to to shoot for.
Yeah, no minimum.
We'll have to play with that now with the sliding scale coming into place.
Because it would depend on your rear, rear yard, too. And then you think also, not all the homes are a clean line. Some of them jog in, so then would we measure that? So Marcy and I can play with it and come back with with ideas on the sliding scale with the square footage.
I had a question about for dimension, yeah, the height. I mean, we were saying fourteen feet. Well, A, where did that come from? B, can we correlate it more to the exist the primary structure instead of up to fourteen feet, you know? If someone has a this is just arbitrary, but, you know, their maximum roof height, maybe they have a flat roof and it's twelve feet, and you're allowing them to do fourteen feet. I mean.
So we got the fourteen feet, just looking at standard tiki sizes. And so the ten by ten, the standard height was fourteen, so that's where it came from.
Got you.
But if we're doing square footage, then that's gonna change your height.
Yeah, because that's your peak, so then it kind of, yeah, and obviously the shapes are different.
So we can look at the standard sizes of tiki and kind of see what. So we can look at the standard sizes of tiki and kind of see what, what the highest would be or what would be reasonable with them.
Four or five on twelve.
Yeah, I would agree with the pitch. Yeah, the pitch, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Which makes it look very big.
Yeah, it makes it look, you're absolutely correct.
Or it's, it's small, but it's...
Really tall.
Got a big roof, which there you could back that up to two on twelve, which then you don't have the height.
Yeah.
It'll be a little flatter.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I think that would be dictated by, what's your maximum square footage and what's your maximum height? And you've got to put it in that box and that cube.
And we'd have it on the table.
Correct.
Yeah.
We also, you might want to, I don't know what the definitions of the cheeky huts are, but the, the tribal builder, they might have a standard of like what that slope is or what, you know, for it to actually be constructed in the correct way, may need to backcheck that.
It's a good idea. Yeah, we'll definitely look at that. So then we'll do the sliding scale for, I guess, all the R1, R2, R3. Potentially in all this commercials.
Commercial, it'll be a little harder because they may not necessarily want something in the defined backyard, but...
It might be in the front or side, so it might be a little... Yeah.
See, why I wanted the height is because of the neighbors.
Yeah, and that makes sense.
Yeah, because especially if you've got somebody that's got, their pool is three feet higher than everything.
Correct.
Then you put fourteen feet on top of that, so you're talking seventeen feet, that the neighbor's going to be looking...
Because you can see the sky.
Yeah, exactly.
And that, that, that's going to become difficult, because then you, we do have properties that are higher. And then at what point is your hut not a reasonable height for it to be used? Um, so that becomes a slippery slope, and I foresee issues there.
Well, it's got to, you're going to have to have a building permit, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
So then what about, what would it take to have the neighbor on the side that's going to be approved? You know, like docs, you know, to have a doc, you have to have, you know, one or two of the...
The affected neighbor.
Yeah, the affected neighbor approve it as well.
We had talked about that as well, if, depending on which way we went with all this.
Well, I mean, you know, because then, then you're wiping your hands. I mean, you know, just like, hey, okay, so, and, and once they sell it, you know, the buyer coming into the new place, that's what it is. So there's no question. I mean, you know, if, if, and like on that example, who's ever on the side to the left of that property, they have to have an approval.
Right.
So...
And, and to be clear, when, just because I know people are probably listening, uh, building permits are not required for the cheeky huts, but they have to get planning and zoning. So there are certain rules that'll come into play there, but no matter what you build, it has to go, be approved through planning and zoning. So we will be able to control all of those facets.
If it's an official cheeky hut.
Yes.
And then there's no electricity to it, um, water.
Yep.
With your traditional cheeky hut.
It's just a freestanding, non-powered, non, yep.
Yeah.
Correct.
But we can still control the location of it.
Absolutely.
It's not the actual construction permit. Okay. Um, I had a question on the C4 zone. Um, is this in response to our mayor's request to?
Yes, um...
Some of it, partially at least.
So do you want to go?
It cuts down the number and size of the structures.
Want to go through all the Cs, and then we can get to that?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Um, just so we're clear, on the R1, on the residential side, you would like us to look at a triangle, but inverted, the other opposite way?
Yeah.
And then we'll do the square footage sliding scale.
Yeah, based on the size of the backyard.
And then would you like us to also look into like the, like a doc sign, sign-off?
Definitely.
It's something to consider, I think.
Well, I mean, you know, it, it, if that's, that's what, as I recall, when we've been talking about the other ones that, which goes into the thing of like, what's going to be grandfathered in? You know, is everything, you know, going to be whatever, but, um, you know, when you put something up, like I say, you know, and you've got seventeen feet, and you're sitting next to there, and you had a view down the canal, now you're looking at seventeen feet, you know, which, it, that's, that's almost a two-story building. You know, so if you don't, if the neighbor doesn't have a pool and next door is a pool, and then they put a hut up there and the fourteen-foot, and then the parameters get there, I mean, you know, this poor neighbor's getting screwed. You know, so just my opinion.
The wider the building is, depending on the degree of the pitch, every degree adds anywhere between two and three, two to three feet in elevation. So in other words, a two-on-twelve is like that, where a six-on-twelve is like this. So you'd have that much more, what he's saying, you're losing. And you're losing the sun, and you're losing all of that. So I think you're going to have to come in with some kind of restriction, because a five and a six-on-twelve is really steep. It makes the building look huge, like a tiki hut. So I think you've got to kind of like mull that over. You know, a three and four is, is a nice... Do you need more than that? No.
On the cheeky huts, you got to be careful, because they're all natural thatching, right? So there's got to be enough to shed water. Um, so that, that's kind of the, a lot of the essence of the cheeky hut thing.
Yeah, that's where they are.
And as long as they fit in the, in the box or in the cube, sort of what ma, who cares, kind of, right? If the max is twelve feet or fourteen feet or fifteen, whatever it is, as long as the, the peak of that is under there. I mean, if they just, if they just pick a crappy design, that's their problem.
I think Marcy and I will look at dimensions of the traditional cheeky hut.
And the pitch, roof pitch and height.
Yeah, with the roof pitch and height, and come back with, with some ideas.
See, and then, then the next question you're going to hear is, well, if I don't put that pitch in, I can't put a ceiling fan in, but you answered your own question, no electric inside of it. So...
That's where, yeah.
There is no reason, if you, except what he just said, the water runoff.
If you don't do a cheeky hut, if you do an engineered gazebo or something like that that can withstand it, then, you know, that opens up the door for, then people will want to do electric and power and water and the shut-offs.
Yeah, we foresee that coming after. More people will want to put outdoor kitchens and...
So tiki hut is a no-no with anything inside of it?
If they're claiming the exemption from the Seminole tribe building it, where they don't have to have engineered plans and all that stuff and permits, they still have to fit within the zoning guidelines, but they don't have to have permit to build it. If that's the case, then it can't be water or power supplied to it.
Mm-hmm.
But if they did something like the, the bottom structure you see of the three pictures, the one in the, the second row, that probably is a permitted structure, and then they could run water power to it. Or that is, because it's not a, I don't think that was built by a Seminole Indian, right?
So after this, we know that we'll have to really address outdoor kitchens and things of that nature and beef up our code, whichever way we, you know, the commission wants to go with that. So that is something that we will be looking at after this.
Yeah, I thi- I think the difficult part is trying to make it fit for everybody, and we're never going to be able to do that. You know, we got to try and find what's best for the most, um, instead of, well, this guy's going to get mad, because his lot's only thirty by forty. He's got a thirty by forty lot when he bought it, and you know, that's going to be a problem.
Well, at that point, you just do a ten by ten.
Yeah.
You know, that's all.
Yeah, so there's got to be a maximum size and a, you know, yeah, based on your...
So where do we measure the height from?
From grade with this.
Construction, yeah. Because that's what it's all based on, is the grade you're constructing it at.
Well, I mean, you can, you can artificially raise your grade.
Correct.
And that would make it, you know, I mean, if it's grade immediately right there, so I mean, if I want it to be three foot higher, I can put three feet of dirt in there, and so, um...
Not legally.
Yeah, we wouldn't...
Because you got to wor- worry about runoff and all that. You can't just raise your grade, especially if you have a house on the ground, you're going to raise your grade three feet, your house is going to be under. It's going to be on the wrong side of things.
It, it should be really established where the height should be measured from, whether it's the top of the seawall or something like that.
You mean finished height?
Yes, the peak.
So if you've got eight-foot walls, and you add whatever, whatever the pitch and that, give you a height?
Yeah, but, but, you know, you, the height, you know, again, we have to worry about the neighbor, right? Make sure that their rights are preserved. So if, if you are saying that this structure would be maximum of fourteen feet height, so you have to measure that height from a certain known point.
The grade.
Well, the grade is pretty flexible.
That's true.
So, you know, it, it's just a thought to, to discuss. I mean, this is subject to discuss and, and analyze. You know?
Yeah, we, and we, we have, we do realize, like, if some of the houses, like, if you were to do that, then you end up losing three feet. And if you take three feet off, then what happens to the eve as you walk underneath? So, yeah, it becomes a little tricky.
Do you have any example pictures of what like the accessory structure would look like within these proposed setbacks?
Andrew, I'm hurt. I went through all this trouble to draw that right there.
Like standing there.
Gotcha.
Because I think, in reality, because it has that, the minimum side setback and rear setback, it's not going to really impact the neighbor's property as much as what, what, like... But it would be better to have like a visual to show that it's not going to be as much of an impact, because I think it's unknown is kind of, like, kind of...
You have a good point.
Yeah.
We could probably do a ren, we could probably do that.
A rendering or take a picture of an existing one.
Take every lot in Madeira Beach, draw an accessory structure on it.
Easy.
And see how it looks.
Easy, easy.
I would, I would like to make a comment too about asking the neighbors, because I think you're just opening a can of worms. And the city really, that, I think that's too much. Like, if you're going to put up a fence, you have the rules and regulations. Here's the fence you can build. Your neighbors, they don't want a privacy fence between the houses, you're allowed to put it up. And it, it's already settled. You don't have an argument. Fences make good neighbors, and not arguing over the height of the fence because of their water view, that's already been solved. Four-foot see-through or three-foot solid, take it or leave it. Up to the structure can be six foot between the structures. You can do less if you want, but I think you're going to have a problem if you're going to have to get your neighbor's permission to do something on your property. That's my opinion.
That's a good point.
Yeah, we do talk to a lot of neighbors that then there's a feud that starts after, oh, I don't really want to sign off on that dock, because then my view is going to be... And then they're not friends anymore.
There could be other issues.
Yeah.
Or I'm getting ready to sell my house, I don't care.
Exactly.
How much?
Your code is going to basically eight-foot walls? Supposing you wanted to put seven-foot walls? Supposing you wanted to put six-and-a-half-foot walls? Supposing you wanted to put a five-on-twelve pitch with a six-and-a-half-inch wall, which could give you the same as a two-on-twelve by an eight-foot wall?
Well, these would be open.
These have no walls.
Well...
Yeah, these don't have any walls.
Pardon me?
So what we're talking about the...
Are, are you specifying eight-foot walls?
We would be specifying. We don't have it in there right now, but we would need to include a definition of enclosed versus open accessory structures. Because we wouldn't want somebody to build a huge shed that's a solid wall, really trying to allow for a shade structure that's open. So in this, you know, when it comes back, we know that we need to have a definition of enclosed versus open accessory structures.
Yeah, that was a point I was going to bring up, because you don't want an enclosed shed that's got a fourteen-foot height.
No.
No, absolutely not.
Because then you end up with a shed with a loft, and they're, they got the kids sleeping out there.
I think that one, I think that one can be more strict.
Yeah.
We can be more strict about the enclosed.
The enclosed structure.
Because we can essentially say, I mean, you can basically have a shed, you know? But the, the open accessory structure, which is more for function of the backyard, I feel like you have to allow that to have some flexibility. But, yeah, looking at that, I, if we're going to define and separate the two, I think we should be a lot more strict on enclosed structures.
Mm-hmm. So I think the only thing that we were suggesting with the enclosed structures is raising the height, I believe. Because right now it's quite low, and we have a lot of, we see a lot of permits come in, they're too high, they have to lower it continuously. So that's one thing that we were suggesting, I think, to ten, and right now it's eight feet, so to ten feet. That's the only thing that we were suggesting to change with the enclosed, like your shed.
And that's the, that's the peak, right? Okay.
Yep.
Overall height.
Yeah.
Yep. So everything with enclosed structures would remain the same, except for the height a little higher. Um, so this is really just open, open structures. Um, let's see. We want to talk about the page fifty-eight. So we're going to look into doing a sliding scale based on the square footage of the rear. And then how our code's broken down is, so it's R1, R2, and R3. So all the residential areas, that includes the beachside, Gulf Boulevard. So you have single-family structures, you can have, um, it shows your maximum size for an enclosed structure is the eight by ten by, we're proposing ten feet high. And then the maximum size will be of the open accessory structure will be that sliding scale. And then going on to two, the duplex and multifamily structures, um, the enclosed is eight by eight by ten. Let's see, and then the maximum size, we'll do a sliding scale as well. And then we suggested duplex and multifamily structures may have two enclosed, and then we weren't sure, so we would like to get your input of how many open accessory structures they would be allowed. Or since we're doing the sliding scale, maybe it would just be, you have this square footage. If you want one, you would be want two, but you have this square footage.
I like that, yeah.
Do that, okay.
I would say that it would have to have a minimum. So in terms of the sliding scale, if the sliding scale, if they can have a hundred and seventy-five, well, you can't really do a ten-by-ten and a ten-by-seven-and-a-half. Have, and that's where the sliding scale, I would say, should have a minimum. And also I would say the scale would be based on green space.
But then you got to consider the sheds, right? You can have a small shed just for a lawnmower that's only three by five. Is that okay? I mean, you know, you, we can over-engineer this and run into more problems than we...
Well, but I mean, but in terms of, that's what is, I was looking on Google Earth here. You, you've got, well, okay, on the Crystal Island especially, you've got all the ends of the island homes. They're huge. You know, they're pie-shaped, and their backyards are huge. I mean, you know, so, so they could theoretically have a large one. But then all the houses, you know, you know, on, on the regular areas are sixty, sixty, sixty-five, seventy-foot wide. So if you only have the green space back there, you're not including, um, porches or screened-in areas. And it's just, you know, it, how it is. I mean, you know, so like, i- if you've got your forty, but forty by, well, supposedly they should be like twenty feet wide or twenty feet deep, generally speaking, I would say. Is the, is the smallest that we have. So that's eight hundred. But if they have stuff back there already, then it would be the minimum of ten by ten. And if ten by ten is... And if ten by ten is too much in that sliding scale, then they can't do it. I I, well, yeah, I mean, you know, like it it like a garden or for your um garage stuff, or not garage stuff, your lawnmower and stuff, there's small huts, you know, you can get a four by eight. You know, to just put your garden tools in. You know, you don't have to have a ten by ten. And that would be an enclosed structure, which gets into the other areas. Yeah, see there, yeah, so like on those ends, that lot number twenty-eight, you got a lot of space back there.
By the same token, the other people's views aren't really impinged by that because of the shape of the lot.
Correct. I mean, you know, but yet then again, uh, well, I happen to be looking. Well, yes, I mean, you'll. So but then, so like, if lot twenty-eight puts a house or puts their tiki on the left side there, that in essence could be eliminating the other person's view out to the intercoastal. So if if they're okay with that, that's fine. If they're not okay with it, then they gotta go to the person to the right side and get their approval, because that would not really affect, well, it would, but you know, not as much.
So you're talking about a similar rule to the dock situation?
Exactly.
Goes in the middle third, or you have to get.
Yeah.
Oh, you do the triangle, like basically, and then if you can fall within that, you're good. If not, then you can get sign-offs.
Right. And see, and that's where I believe Hush was talking about, the triangle would be for the lot, um, what's it, twenty-nine? Their triangle view.
Yeah, so you'd have to define the view angle. You'd have to define the view angle from the back of the primary structure, cause if, as you can see here, if, uh, oh, man.
Sorry.
Lost it. You just zoom in. Like the example I'm thinking of, right, is, yeah, scroll up. If thirty wants to put a tiki hut where the cursor is, or something. Or thirty-one is further towards the water than thirty. So their angle of view is not back towards the primary structure of thirty, you know, so like if you wanted to, if you're thirty and you wanted to put your primary structure or accessory structure towards your home, then that's not gonna be affected by either of your neighbor or your views, right? So you have to do, you have to pick an angle off of the corner of each primary structure, and that's how you would define it.
So you would come off the, you're saying come off the corner and draw that?
So you'd say, okay, the the view angle.
Oh, man.
If you're within thirty-seven degrees off the corner of the primary structure, right? That's that's the only way you could define it, cause you can't, you can't just set an arbitrary triangle to every property. You'd have to do it by a specific view angle, which is affected by the back of the primary structure.
Well, I think the problem with all that is that the past commissioner already determined your view is
Yeah.
out the back of your yard. That's all you're entitled to. Now, if you're friends with your neighbors and you say, hey, I don't wanna put it there unless you're okay, but to go get the stuff signed off on, it's it's never gonna, it's just gonna cause way more headaches. And these triangles and all that, y- you're gonna get a big mess of stuff coming in over your desk for everyone. You gotta just figure out what it is. I like the idea of having the sliding scale.
Yep.
Your backyard, you just make a rectangle out of it like you were doing. If there's a, if the house sticks out a little bit, you don't have to go deduct
Yeah.
five square feet off of it, and you just come up with the sliding scale, this is what you can do, and you got the setbacks, you can put it here, period.
I'm personally in favor of not having the approval from your neighbor, because we're, this isn't an HOA, this is a city, and you you do not have any right to your neighbor's property. There's no, there's no mutual agreement of your neighbors and you. So there's no reason that they should have any input on what you put on your property. If this was a big HOA, then we could have this discussion, but we, it's not, it's a city.
Said it a lot better than I did. Thank you.
Teamwork makes a dream work.
Someone have to put the ball in the tee.
Okay.
Hmm, okay, should we go to the commercial?
Oh, yeah, that part was so much fun, let's do that.
So if we go back to page fifty-seven, let's just start at C-one, that's John's Pass Village. We didn't propose any changes there. Same for C-two, that's boardwalk. And then C-three, so C-three is on the east side of Gulf Boulevard. Do we wanna go zoning map? So you can see.
So you're changing, in C-three, you're changing the side setback from five to ten? Cause in C-one, it was five foot, right? And a two and a half.
Yeah, five foot. Looking at C-one, that's the pink. It's okay, I'm kinda jumping all over the place, uh, zoning, not the land use.
C-three's so appropriate.
C-three is the red, the pink is C-one, but yeah, it's a landward sign and then up near Publix as well. So the the enclosed, enclosed accessory structure would be be ten foot side and rear setback. Um, let's see. And that's from our setbacks in the zoning code for the primary structure, that's where we got that. Um, and then an open accessory structure, tiki hut, may be located in any yard in C-three. Um, and then what we weren't sure of was the setbacks. So what we did is we looked up and down, just Google Street View and driving, um, looking at all the C-three properties. And would it be appropriate for them to have a tiki hut or a shade, a permanent shade structure in the front yard? Or in the side yard? There are some locations that we feel like that could be appropriate for outdoor seating. Um, if you're a restaurant on C-three. So that's not currently in there, but it's something that we thought was appropriate. We wanted to get your idea on what y'all thought. In the front yard, uh, rear yard, what the setback would be, how big that would be. Uh, if we wanna do a sliding scale as well, or what that would look like if we're not just looking at the rear of the property, but we're also looking at the front of the property. So I wanna get your input.
Yeah, are we looking at the use of the property or just the zoning too? Because some of those in the C-three are residential use.
Yes, they are.
Uh, whether they're used as vacation rentals or whatnot, but there's condos, there's apartments, there's single-family homes.
All over the place.
There's commercial, there's restaurant, there's retail, office. A- and they're all, and I would venture to say that probably ninety percent of them are non-conforming anyway.
Yeah.
At this point.
You're right.
Like, I know mine is.
Most of them are.
Yeah. My back building sits right on my property line on the back, I have like zero setback. So.
Yeah, and that's not uncommon.
Yeah.
C-three's a little tricky, just like what you were saying.
But I think it's also the least impacted by anything we do, cause how many are gonna want an accessory structure? Anyway.
Or if you're a hotel and you have a pool, it would be nice to have a shade structure out there by the pool.
Yeah, but then there's also ways to get around that. They put up those sail cloth things, it's not a structure.
Yeah.
Kosher, you know, so, um.
And you could say, you could do the same thing with outdoor seating, or you have umbrellas. It's a way that people go around.
They just go by the sliding scale.
Yeah. But do we allow it in front yard?
That's a tough one there, the front yard.
Or if it's based on use? If you have a mixed-use property?
Yeah, I mean, is there a qualifier to it, that it's the, they're allowed in the front yard if it's only used for uh, patron seating?
Do something like that.
I mean, I don't, I don't know, it's kinda thinking. I mean, I'm trying to think of what's up and down in the boulevard, right? I mean, like, yeah, coastal tacos, they.
Exactly.
You gotta open space, Lisa's Cafe, yeah. Uh, stuff like that. I mean, how many other ones are, there's buildings right up on the street?
So many of them.
So there's, you can't do anything there, obviously. Um, I I just don't know, I mean, are we trying to? Are we trying to fix something that isn't really broken?
Kind of. Well, we really wanna look at, yeah, and we wanna look at, if we're diving into accessory structures, we wanna look at it, and there's, there are some places that do have open accessory structures that, you know, looking at Google Street View, driving around, really, oh, that was not permitted. Or, oh, they couldn't have that now, but it's reasonable.
Yeah, well, welcome to Madeira Beach.
Yeah, of course, it's everywhere. But you're trying to allow for people to do things that would be reasonable.
I think it'd be smart to just keep it consistent, and then for the odd one or two here and there, then it's a variance.
Well, variances now have to meet all six criteria and.
Oh, yeah, the hardship especially is the hard one.
So. Is this land usable without a tiki structure?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay, bad chairman. Well, I mean, I mean, I guess the consistency is an issue, right? If we're gonna change it for all the other zoning categories, hmm, maybe there needs to be something in there. But again, we, I don't think we need to get mired in the muck with over-engineering every single aspect of this.
Well, you could say no in the front yard.
Like, is this an issue or are we creating one?
Not in C-three. In C-four, yes. Um, just because I don't think that we have many code violations. I have seen a few since looking at this.
Yes.
Yeah, we're aware of the C-four thing. We're made aware. I don't know, I.
And for us too, it's kinda like, once we opened this up and started doing our research, we kinda, okay, let's stick with this topic through and just kind of while it's.
No, I s- I see your point for sure, and I I get it that you wanna maintain consistency through the codes for, regardless of the category. But again, we're gonna over-engineer this, and there's no way we're gonna be able to think of every single thing that's gonna be a factor uh, to where it doesn't harm a neighbor, it doesn't over-improve a property, it doesn't, I mean, holy cow. Cause that C-three strip is just like, ugh, it's everywhere.
The whole different, a lot of different uses.
I mean, you got buildings right up on the sidewalk, then you got buildings that are set way back from the sidewalk, we got some that are retail, restaurant, single-family, multifamily. I mean, it's, holy crap, it's everything.
What's what's the minimum setback, let's say, in C-one, C-two, or C-three from a C-wall? What's the minimum setback, rear, rear, for the main, main structure?
In C-three, in the rear, it's ten feet, or if you're on the C-wall, or if you're on the water, then it's eighteen from the C-wall. From the water's edge. Um, C-two, I'm, let up. C-one is ten feet on one side. Yeah, we can go to C-two. That's his moment, huh? The C-two front yard, twenty, rear on the water is none, this is the boardwalk. Um, and then the side yard is five feet on one side. We weren't proposing any changes in C-one or C-two. Do you wanna look at the setbacks in C-three?
Well, I mean, if you are in a C zoning, it's commercial, people wanna do business, you're not, you know, so. And if the structure, main structure itself setback is ten feet, and I know sometimes it's eighteen feet, and and the reason for eighteen feet is because those dead men are eighteen foot long. Often enough, he can get a variance, bring it down to ten feet, so I would, I would just not worry too much about the visibility or or the attractiveness um, for the neighbors in commercial zoning. It's more like activity center.
So what you've got proposed is open accessory structures may be located in any yard in the C-three, so that's front, back, or side. Open accessory structures must provide question mark foot, front, side, and rear setback. Right, so that's what you're looking for, some guidance on what that is.
Yeah, or if we just wanna leave it alone, leave it alone?
I mean, if we left it alone, what it, wha- what is it? I don't see what it is if we leave it alone. It just says they may not be located in the front yards.
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, I get the point that.
It's more like your enclosed shed is.
You know, what what if you, if forget all this stuff that's written in red here, and you have access to the original text, accessory structures, not enclosed, just accessory structures may not be located in front yards of C-three, retail, commercial zones, except food service, uh, food and beverage service, you know, dine-in, drink-in, whatever. To, uh, COP use properties? Maybe there's a carve-out there, so you can't have it in the front yard, because then all of a sudden you got tiki huts popping up in front of
Yeah.
like a, you know, retail store, and now they're putting merchandise outside or something, I don't, I don't know. You know? Or end up, you know, we do have some adult entertainment use zoning, and you don't want that out in the cheeky hut, right? Hey, it could happen, right?
Yeah.
Displaying your services.
Anything happens here.
Um, so maybe there's a carve-out for if it's food and beverage service with COP uh, licensing, they can have something. I don't know what that answer is, I'm not, you know, I'm probably creating a bigger problem than we had, but I think that's, it feels like that's where you were trying to head with this?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Yeah, restaurant, restaurant and we'll look at it.
Yeah, restaurant and COP beverage service or something.
What you're looking for is, you're looking for something that has some bite to it that you can write into this. So it protects you in a further date down the road.
That's what we're always looking at.
Of course. But then what if that use changes on that property?
Right.
Right, I mean, you got like, like the um, the reef screw lilies, whatever.
Yeah.
They used to be a doctor's office. Right? So does a doctor's office, you know, if somebody bought that building and converted it back to a doctor's office, would they still, would you still allow an open accessory structure out in the front? I mean, what would be the use of that there?
Is it legally non-conforming?
So is there like a caveat there? So it would be con- and a continue, a grandfathered in, non-conforming use, right? Hmm?
That's what I'd imagine, but, yeah, is that really the best?
I almost bought it when it was a doctor's office, I should have, stupid me.
Yeah, but see, but when, when they went through the reconstruction, that front area bar was shut down because it wasn't conforming.
Right.
So they, yeah, by by doing some altercations.
Alterations.
Alterations.
After the altercation.
That.
But they they put up temporary sales and things, so they accomplished the mission.
But they had a bar out there before.
Right.
So and and now there's no longer the bar, so.
I don't even know.
Yeah. I'm kinda, I'm kinda thinking, leave it alone.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think we, I I understand wanting to like move, potentially move it into the commercial side, but the reason that we're even talking about this is because people wanted this at their homes.
Yep.
Like, we don't need to just blanket it over commercial. I I'd rather just stick with the issue at hand for people, which is for their house.
And C-four.
And, yeah, well.
It's something that we need to.
Well, that's an obvious, that's an obvious issue.
Yeah.
Right? We don't have any obvious issues in C three.
Right.
That I'm aware of. We have an obvious issue
In C four.
That we're having trouble enforcing in C four. Now, are we using, potentially using code changes to create an enforcement situation? I mean, is there a legal problem there?
In C four?
I don't, I don't know the history of C four, but obviously there is a history, which is fine. I mean, if you need codes, that's what code's for.
Okay.
There's issues, you know, um, someone's building twenty-six-foot homes, and you don't want homes that are that high, you pass codes.
In a nutshell, there's like a bunch of accessory storage units on a particular property that are, the opinion is that they shouldn't be. So if this code put in place
And they have an issue there that's gonna be legal non-conforming use, because this code won't affect that property, cuz they're already there, possibly. I don't know what's there.
Well, they're temporary in nature as well.
So, but, but code is, code is written to address uniformity and enforcement within a community, so you're able, you're absolutely able to, to dra- to draft code and go forward with it. People can obviously challenge it if they feel it's inappropriate, but that's, that's the purpose of a code, right, is to address things that you want to address within your community. Um, the fact that you know there's an issue, you knew there was an issue with the tiki huts, now you're addressing it, so I would look at it the same way.
Okay.
And Tom Trask will tell the board differently if he disagrees with me, when it gets to the next, next level.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Do we wanna jump into C four?
Oh, sure, it's been great so far, yeah.
We wanna leave, leave C three alone? And then we're gonna come this, bring this back as a draft, so if you're thinking about C three and, oh, I really wish we did do something, then we can always, you know, do it later.
The only thing with C three is for the residential folks, like, you should have something for them, you know, like, hey, you can follow
Saw that coming.
What's on the C two, uh, the R two or something like that, because they are residential.
Something in the rear, in the rear yard, it's almost like mirror the
Right, just the rear yard, mirror one of the other ones, for the residents only.
Yeah.
Yeah, so again
Cause there's a lot of duplexes there.
You're carving out based on use, not by zoning category. If this, then that.
For C three, it would not to confuse it all too much, I think they should have something for the residential folks.
Okay, yeah, I would definitely, it's, I like that.
But yet, are they gonna put a hut in their front yard?
Now they're gonna follow no hut in the front yard.
Yeah.
And that's what it is.
Well, no, that's, we were saying, take that out.
Yeah. Yeah.
Cuz that's proposed, our, what we were telling them just a minute ago is leave it the way it is. And then Commissioner Noble.
Well, but it says may not be located in the front yard.
Right.
Yeah, we'll, we'll keep it like that.
But, you, so we're gonna have no accessory structures, right? There's none allowed in
In C three. There shouldn't be.
Well, there you have it. Commissioner has spoken. In, in near plurality.
So we'll mirror something for the C three, it'll be similar to the R one, R two, R three, for the rear.
Ladies have your work cut out for you.
I know.
Let's see what C four looks like, it's been so much fun so far.
So, C four. Andrew, can you pull that up on zoning? It's like the marinas, the commercial fishing. There's a few places, not many, and then Madeira Bay too.
That's the deep red, right?
Yeah, and then our marina
Brown, burnt umber, is that what that is?
Burnt umber, maroon.
Maroon, okay.
Yeah, so not many places. So the issue that we're
Yeah, we already know.
Is that we have a lot of working waterfronts, commercial fishing, marinas, that, um, for their, getting fish on, off the boat, they must be ice, they must be iced on the boat. This is, is it FDA?
Yeah, we had some
And they also needed to be shaded. This is all coming from the FDA. Those are requirements. So this is why we've had issues of, okay, well, you have an accessory structure that's open, um, or an accessory structure that's enclosed, like an ice machine, that is not within the allowed setback, but it, you have to have ice on your fishing boat, so you have to have the chute that goes from the ice machine to your fishing boat, that's a requirement from the FDA. You have to ice your fish, um, as well as the, when you unload your fish, it has to be under an enclosed structure.
So now can tell that scale.
So, this is where we're having the issue of, okay, well, you have a lot of these properties, not just one, almost all of these properties have accessory structures, or structures, that are not within the setback, but are required from the FDA, or required from the state, that we also can't enforce something to close down uh, the working waterfronts, um, because they are very much heavily protected by the Florida statutes. That we're not allowed to put into our code, um, something that would call them a nuisance and allow them to shut down. This is where we've had an issue before.
That was sort of my question.
Yeah, so we attempted to bring something, um, when Linda was, was here, to allow the setback to be immediate, was that immediately adjacent to, to the water's edge, uh, permitted, if it's a federal or a state regulation. So we brought that, it's like over a year ago, we brought that, uh, we got that code from, I think it was Anna Marie, um, seemed to work down there, so we were trying to put that in our code, so then we could actually go forward and try to enforce and, and look at these properties. But then that was, I think it was just tabled at second reading, I wasn't there, I think I had COVID, or was not at the meeting. So, it's not in the code, we need to address, we need to address it. It's a tricky situation.
So is that the only area we have C four?
Yeah, there's not many places, uh, it's also down there, that will be in the Johns Pass Village Activity Center. So if that gets approved, that'll go away, it'll have a note, a new zoning, um, our marina and the property next to our marina, which is also a commercial fishing.
Well, the, the one by Johns Pass is a moot point, really, cuz it's not being used as such anyway. I mean, you've got townhomes and condos and
It's not
Restaurant.
It's not a marina, it's not a working waterfront, but, yeah, exactly.
Did that? I proposed for the commissioner's meeting of having all the boats, liverboard boats, to be flushed out every month. Did that ever pass? I even brought it up with Robin. Because you have, you have
I'm thinking, probably not, but I am not sure.
That might be a
Because I brought that
Yeah, I don't think that we could enforce that.
In that area, you have four boats that have not moved in years. And where is the waste going?
I think that, what we were talking about before, that that would be like with the state and not, yeah, sheriffs.
Would move, some of these people would move their boats slightly.
Yeah.
Just enough to like
I heard that.
For it not to be triggered.
Yeah.
The, the trick is to move it, or just take it from one and move it over here, and take that one and move it over there. It's the same thing that's going on out here.
Going on everywhere?
Um.
Yeah.
They just move them, and then they don't have to clean them. So I had a long conversation with Robin about this, about going up higher, because first of all, it's federal waters. We have no jurisdiction once it's in the water. So there's your problem. You gotta get Chaney.
Be hard to enforce as well. So
If you start the ball rolling, at least you'd have something, and it's the same thing with the ice machine that runs twenty-four hours, seven days a week, and all those beautiful condos, or I should say, homes, listen to that. I hear you. I know. What can we do?
So what we're proposing is the same as what we proposed before, um, and then, let's see. Accessory structures must provide a ten-foot side and rear setback, but then if they are required by federal or state regulations, to be immediately proximate to the water's edge, it could be permitted within that required setback. That's what we have written up. If you have any suggestions, we would love to.
I think what, I think what you have written there is good. I mean, you know, because it's, it's, you're, you're setting a standard ten-foot side, ten-foot back, and, and, you know, other than state regulations that we've gotta comply with anyway, you're kinda
It's hard.
Yeah.
So would they have to bring like a piece of paper from the state to stipulate requirements?
Yeah, we would have to check, not just, oh, you said that it's required. You know, we would have to have, um, and that's what we've, we've had, um, brought to us before by property owners of like the FDA regulations, um, that it is required, so and how can you, you know, it's required by state, by federal, and then we can't really not
And it's not our area of expertise as far as the FDA requirements, but we did recently, um, do our, um, our RFP for engineering firms, and we did bring on a lot. So I was gonna look at the firms that we have and see if any of them have like a marine division, and maybe they have a, somebody who specializes in permitting and design, who could also look at this and go, oh, here's what they have to have, they're right, but it doesn't have to be there. Then we could specifically look at this property if we, if we needed to better understand really the requirements there.
So it is hard, we are not a specialist in
So, so if we, let's say, worst-case scenario, if we say, all right, let's make our four-zero setback from the rear property slash seawall, how would that be detrimental? Would that affect a whole bunch of other uses that may not wanna be that close?
Well, I think it's just the one area that we're really talking about, and by setting some setback guidelines, you, you can't have other structures other than what is necessary to work. And, and you know, if, if they're gonna waive their, you know, rules and not abide by them, they're gonna do that. But yet, at least to have something here, and the only thing that they can put within the other setbacks is what is necessary to maintain their work. So, and, and like, not, not at all having zero, you know, zero setback would be, I think, very detrimental.
Well, I was thinking just R four though, not
Yeah, but it's, it's, basically, it's only one piece of property.
Yeah, if we're trying to create a code to
There's two properties, really.
Well, I mean, you know, but one, one's, one is the
It's almost like three properties, because you, you have this property, you have the city marina, and then you have the property right next to the city marina. If you look at Google Street View, they also have
Right.
similar structures, but it's not really been addressed all too much. This one's just
And, and the problem
Your next residential
We have, can't be fixed by changing this because of potential federal guidelines on the fish handling situation.
And the Florida statutes is very specific on protecting working waterfronts as well.
So again, are we making a new problem?
Trying to fix a problem that right now we don't have a solution for.
And this doesn't seem, I mean, no, I know you're putting a lot of work in, I'm not trying to belittle that. This doesn't seem like it's gonna fix it, because we're gonna have that same problem.
You're still gonna have, there's still going to be structures that wouldn't fit into this, but it allows for us to go out and permit structures that are required.
Not exacerbate the problem.
Yeah.
Okay, but now had we opened up a can of worms with the, uh, square footage on the structures?
Well, this one doesn't have square footage, but
That they can have so many, they can have so many, yeah.
What is it right now? Um, I think we're proposing eight feet wide, twelve feet long, ten feet high. Have one enclosed, two open.
Okay, I can live with that.
I mean, you know, and that's like, hopefully you understand where I'm coming from in terms of, you know, whether or not you said, and I said specifically, green area because of the permeable, you know, so any structures are gonna be non-permeable. But yet, I believe that whole entire property is
There's not any impervious surface there. I mean, it's all impervious surface there.
Yeah, I mean, you know, so I think if you say the green area, they have no green area.
And most of, most of these properties that are, look at the marina and the property next to the marina, don't have much green area as well, pervious spaces, space.
I don't, I can live with what you've proposed.
Yeah, I think it's very good.
Done a lot more time on this than we have.
Oh, really?
And that makes sense. Well, maybe than most of us have, except you. And it makes logical sense after hearing the whole part of it, so, yeah, good with me. I can't speak for everybody else, but
So I think that Mercy and I will look at all the comments from today. And we'll redraft this, and then we can bring it back. And then once we feel a little bit more comfortable with it, then we can turn around, write it up in ordinance form, and then bring it. So it'll probably be
Okay.
January, February, something like that.
And then we'll get to go through this all again.
Yes. Okay.
Well, and I guess as I'm looking here, you got, there's the item here, maximum size in C one, two, three, and four. I guess could you separate out C four?
Yeah, we definitely could.
And segregate that so it's completely different?
Yeah. I put a note earlier that, to look at that, so, yes, I was thinking the same.
All right, any more insight on that? Is that all? Is that all? Is that all we have?
Is that it?
Um, okay.
Um, I did have one thing to mention that wasn't on here. Um, I just wanted to mention that we are moving forward with a master plan, RFQ. We haven't really brought it here yet, but, um, we've gotten that direction from B O C. So we will be putting out the RFQ, we're looking to do that mid-November, and then, then I'll come back, I think, January, late January. So just wanted to put that out there, that, that we will start having those discussions on the master plan. It's exciting.
Good talk.
Good stuff. Thank you for all of that, really, it's, um, I appreciate, and I know the citizens appreciate all the time and effort that went into it to address concerns that they've raised at more than one of our meetings, so, really good stuff. Uh, any other discussion from our planning commission members?
General discussion?
Yes.
General. Um, just a concern. We know ADA accessibility and ramps and sidewalks and things in that nature, so I have noticed around town there are a lot of sidewalks that may be sort of separated, and they cause trip hazard for pedestrians. And I've also noticed that in some ADA ramps, there's no truncated dome, things in that nature, so sometimes you have to worry about legal aspect of these things, and there are people that would wanna make money. Just to wanted to bring caution, just to put it out there and maybe put some money aside at some point to fix portions of it at a time, maybe?
Good stuff, yeah.
That's a thought.
Good observation. Good observation. Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? You're all quiet over there, John. You're always quiet. All right, next meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 4, same location, same time. Any other informational stuff you need to hand out or provide us with? And with that, we are adjourned, thank you.